There's the first thing.
The United States of America, into the Republic of which of sands, one nation, under God, and the invisible liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. We have a quorum. I want to amend the agenda and add in further discussion, possible action on the employee handbook update.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's put it in right before department head discussion. Okay, now I'll take a motion to the, to approve the agenda as amended in the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, Rich?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just poking my head in because I was over here talking to the attorneys for the, your jury trial that you've got going on this week. Do you have anything for me? I didn't see anything, I'm not aware of anything, but I was here, I just saw they poked my head in.
I think so. Last we had was the 208E with the three counties to the west.
Did you guys approve that?
Um, no, it's coming up today.
Okay.
We're on Zoom.
A few things that some other counties wanted to adjust or do whatever, so.
At 11:45?
Yep.
11:45 Zoom.
Yeah, I've, I've got a mental health hearing later on this morning, I'm not sure if it would be done, but, again, I, I don't see any.
Yeah, that's the only thing I know.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's it, you've seen that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Back to you, Rich. First thing on the agenda here.
General road maintenance, not really a whole lot to talk about today, anyway. But the review and possible action on resolution of the 208E, that's, that's the agreement with the DOT to have them be the lead on this grant for this bridge that we've been talking about. So, all it is, is we've got, we've got a resolution for you to sign, and we've also got the agreement, I think we emailed everything out to you guys, if you guys haven't reviewed it, but, it's kind of a standard, standard document saying they're hiring HDR to do the grant. We're working with HDR through the DOT to get all the information for the grant. They'll submit it, basically, we'll be paying our share of the fees for the grant, and we are going to let the project, our, our bridge is going to be bundled with the DOT, with a DOT bridge, and this morning I kind of found out it's probably looking at like maybe July 2028 letting. They gotta be let in fiscal year, federal fiscal year 28, so July's in the tail end of federal fiscal year 28. We can probably meet that deadline, or ways out yet, so it shouldn't be too difficult to, to put a bridge in for that. It's a standard sized bridge, so it won't take a whole lot of effort to get it designed and let according to their timeline, so. Basically, just need the approval of the, uh, the resolution to, um, it's the letter of support for the competitive highway bridge grant, CHPP grant, for our bridge, which is the federal ID number, uh, 356-251 is the bridge. So, I don't know if we've got a resolution number for that, Jackie, I'm not, but.
Yeah, 24.
Yep, it's 2025-24.
And then the other, the other signature sheet is just the agreement for the, um, the actual competitive highway agreement. One's a resolution to do the project, the other one's for the agreement, so.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-24 for the 208E.
I'll second that. Roll call vote, Smitty, or Stone?
Aye.
Lowered, aye. Motion carries.
So I'll have the resolution for that, and then I've got it all in one sheet here. If you guys got your own sheets, you can sign on and give it to me.
Well, that's what this thing is.
Yeah, I can just scan it and.
Yep, if you're gonna sign it, she can send it, send it, I just gotta give it to the DOT before a week from now. I was gonna say, it's the standard nomenclature is the last grant, but we haven't gotten it.
Who wants it? You?
Thank you for that. And then the other thing I have, we have, uh, the DNR, Rob Patterson's here to kind of discuss. Kind of brought it to you guys' attention a while back about Grouse Avenue and Elk Creek, and the DNR, anticipating doing a project, I'll let, let Rob speak on that.
Yeah, as at a supervising board layer meetings earlier this winter, talked about at Grouse Avenue, there's some, CMPR metal culverts going through that road, that have a water control structure on the front side of it that we used to manage water in that marsh. We have an opportunity to apply for a grant to, uh, upgrade that infrastructure and switch it over to a concrete box culvert. We'd be switching from some pretty old, uh, metal culverts there that are, you know, holding their own, but on their way out the door, to these metal cul, or, uh, concrete box culverts. So we're applying for the grant now, that grant is due very soon here, and as part of that, I think I talked to, um, Rich about partnering with the county, uh, to cover those culverts, so we kind of, the total estimate, I think, for the project is about 750,000. We broke that down, because there's some stuff in there that has nothing to do with the county, right? Like cat logs and stop logs and things like that that we're gonna use. Pretty much broke it down just to what it would cost to replace that metal with a concrete culvert, and I think that came up to what, like 500,000, Rich?
Yeah, you had some numbers in here, and I guess, um, the contributing value, of course, their grant covers, is it 50% of the cost, was it? I can't remember what that was.
I think the total, basically what it didn't cover, what, what the state was gonna be covering, if we didn't partner with the county, would be about 370,000 of that project, so we just asked if we could split that 50/50 with the county, as there's kind of mutual benefits there, and, uh, you know, Rich and I have been, I guess, working through that. So, for this grant application, which we haven't been awarded, we need a partner statement, so we sent Rich a partner statement that we would need a signature from you guys that just says, as part of this process, for this grant, to partner with the DNR, we would, uh, the county would.
We're gonna get, the, the, the grant, uh, partner statement is that, um, we're willing to partner with the DNR with a, for a, for a dollar value up to 184, 185,000 dollars. That gets us, uh, I guess the county a brand new twin box structure underneath that road, and it gets them a new, um, control structure on their behalf in the grants covering, you know. I think, I thought it was, when I read through it, it was 50%, but maybe it's not, but, or, or, we're looking at 185,000 dollar bill to get a twin box cover, which is probably a really good deal for us. What it will do, with the size of the anticipated culvert sizes, we'll end up having that, that bridge will add to our federal aid or our federal bridge program, because it's gonna be a span longer than 20 feet, it'll add, it'll add to our inventory, but as we've gone through things, things have dropped out of the inventory, things have been added, but it's a box culvert structure, so it's not gonna add a, the county a lot of expense, as far as having bridge inspections done on it every, every two years.
Is it double, double box?
They're looking at a twin 10 by 7.
Yeah, 10 by 7, so. And basically, this partner statement just goes with the grant, and it just makes our grant look better to say, you know, we've reached out to some partners, and this is a really nice contribution that'll show that we've put forth effort, there's local buy-in, and there's just cooperation going on locally, I guess, is kind of what the.
I think it'll be good for that location, just what's there now, I mean, I know it's not a heavily traveled road, but what's there now and their, their structure and what we have. Our, our pipe eventually are kind of wear out, we might as well, if we've got an opportunity to, to get a reduced cost structure in there, I think it's a good idea to.
I agree.
We'll probably use, we'll use our local funding, 185,000 dollars, depending, and you're looking at a construction or letting date.
27.
Fiscal 27, so we've got time and budget for that, too, so. I think it's a good idea, partner with them and get something, put the ground over that way.
Yeah, I'd agree, I mean.
Yeah.
We could buy box culverts or get box culverts installed at reduced pricing.
And we'll hit all the engineering, install, letting, all that process.
We just get to write a check.
That's.
That's even better for me.
So is there a motion to partner with the DNR on the culverts on Grouse Avenue up to 185,000?
I'll make a motion to partner with the DNR on it.
I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. Motion carries. I did my aye late. What do you want me?
Just sign something, I'll finish it. And I'll, how soon do you need, uh?
Whenever.
I can email it to you today.
That'd be fine, yeah, okay.
That's all I've got for the board this morning.
We appreciate you guys moving the partner.
You bet.
Thank you, Rob.
Appreciate you, young man.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, thank you.
How was that look?
Good enough.
You gonna give them everything they want?
You bet.
Okay. That's about it for you, right?
That's it for me.
Okay. Now we'll move on to drainage, and we're gonna jump around a little bit there. We're gonna do the claims first.
Good.
So is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve claims.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, now we're gonna do the work orders, and the first one is DD7 lateral 4B, submitted by Mark Smitty. There's a hole in the road from the tile.
Yeah.
But the one along the inters, which one is that one?
Seven. I looked at it, and it just goes right up to his property. By what road it goes through, I don't know. Oh, seven. Two. So, he's at Bristol, okay. Sorry, I'm not editing this, huh? What was it, lat, what? It is, in DD7 lat, 4B. His property lays right alongside of it.
Yeah. Must be, it's on the chip road. We blacked out the Rumses that address at 420, 420, right?
430.
430, yeah. Okay. Yeah, not the, it's the one north, curves out and heads out to Wheeler Wood. Unless, unless lat B runs through there. That's in the road, do we, roads need to fix it, or, I don't know, do you have time, or you gonna have somebody else fix it?
We'll probably end up having to do it.
It's in the road, I mean.
It's in the road.
Yeah, so.
I'll motion to approve the work order.
I have a motion to approve the work order for DD7 lateral 4B, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All that are opposed, same sign, motion carries.
What, you guys think they'll look at it then?
Yeah, email me the work order, Jackie, if you can.
The next one we're gonna look at is Kenny Partridge on DD1, and the water's moving north of the ditch. That's the same ditch that goes all the way up.
Are you?
Yes, that's me. I thought I was standing there answering questions.
That's the ditch that goes all the way up to Gene Severson's.
He's had, he was in with issues a couple months ago, right?
Yep.
And then where are you having issues at?
Uh, right, my south property line. It's coming across the ditch onto my property.
Okay. So what do you think needs to happen? Ditch needs to get cleaned?
Needs to get cleaned out. Last year, the tree that come across, had dammed it up, and I contacted the landowner, and we went ahead and removed the trees, but I guess silted up enough there that I got like 400 some feet that the water's coming across, and my tile can't take away fast enough.
And that's, you have, is there trees, willow problems?
No.
Anything?
No, there were. There was, but we've taken them out.
You, you west of 65, then?
Yes.
West side of 65, I see that all got cleaned out. I see there's willows east.
Yeah.
There's, between there and the tracks, I know there's always willows in there.
Yeah.
Has that not been cleaned?
I would say no.
So it needs to get cleaned from where you're at, at least all the way to Shell Rock?
Yeah, I would think so. Probably just a little bit to the west of me, too, because it comes down the hill there, and then it sort of lowers out.
Where's that, Severson's at?
He's to the west of farther up, quite a ways. This ditch is long.
Yes.
It turns long ways.
Yep.
I don't know where we start or stop, but.
Severson's is on the west side of Mallard.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it runs, it runs through Harris's, it runs through Johnson's down there.
Yeah.
Then it crosses 65, the tracks, and ends up the river.
Yep.
About a mile and a half east, I suppose.
And you're on the west side of 65, on the north side, and it's running up there, so. We almost need to engage an engineer.
We'd have to, we're gonna have to bid it, because it's probably gonna be quite a bit to get cleaned. I don't think we'll change a ton, but we'll just have to get multiple bids to get it cleaned, and.
Yeah. Do you agree that we need to get an engineer involved?
I suppose we probably better, if we're gonna go after the whole thing, I mean, if everybody's probably having problems with that, well.
Do you remember any work being done that you didn't do, that?
Uh, many years ago, they, the property south me, they cleaned a portion of it out. I think they had Jay Andrew do it. But, the heat didn't go up into the area where the cottonwoods were.
Sure.
Which are gone now.
Yeah. And just from what I see, on each side of 65.
Got the pipeline going through there.
Railroad?
Yeah, railroad to the east.
But it's all open, it's all open ditch, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it looks like on.
So we have to.
Yeah, it's open ditch way up to where it ends up in, in Butler's, up there.
Way up on the north side?
Way up on, yeah, on the northwest corner up in there.
Um, yeah. I guess we'll have to get, maybe get an engineer involved, get some estimates going, and see what it's gonna, they usually give us a pretty good idea what it'll take. How accurate, do we know how accurate that class, reclassification is, or classification is?
It is not accurate at all.
No.
The only people that have been assessed are the people up in the northwest area up in there.
Really?
She sent out a map to us of what was being.
It isn't a full schedule.
Yeah, that's, that would come up. Yeah, we're gonna have to do a reclass, annexation. And then we gotta figure out who we're using for an engineer.
Do we need to start with a landowner meeting?
Probably.
It's usually our process, we get all the landowners together to see who's had problems, where there's problems, to make sure we don't go through all this, and then a bunch of them don't want to do it and kill the project, you know what I mean? We try to just have that discussion with everybody, because at the end of the day, it's, it's your money and their money, everybody else's, so.
I spent money on tile and inlets there, because, yeah, I get a lot of water from the west coming down the hill.
Yeah.
And that's where a lot of it was coming, just, and we get excessive rains there, that ditch would overflow, but this last time, we had like three and a quarter over two days, and I, for two days, I had water coming over.
Really?
I got other spots that usually drowned out, that haven't drowned out yet, so.
I think we'll do that. I think we'll just get a landowner meeting organized here, and we'll try to meet within the next, maybe by the end of next three, four weeks. We usually give a couple weeks, uh, give a ballot week to get them sent out. We give everybody a couple week notice to make plans to be here. Before that, or maybe towards the end of July, we can have a meeting and see where everybody's at with it. It's a bolt.
Yeah.
Because according to, according to the map that Val sent out, there's, the part, this thing's like this long, and only up in here, these parcels are the only ones that have ever paid into this ditch.
Really?
Have you ever paid into it, anything done?
Not that I.
Yeah, so you're not, you're not being assessed, so.
In the Dean Green District, 40, to north of me.
That's another mess.
That's another.
I think that one's on the rest.
That's on different land, though, right?
We've had enough cash.
It's on my same property.
Right, but I mean, your property's strip between two drainage districts.
Yes.
Yeah.
We've had enough cash for issues for that so far, but at some point, that's gonna have to be reassessed, too, or reclassified.
That's what we're running into, is all this stuff's pushing 50, 70, 100 years old, hasn't been touched, so.
That's always been my question, like upstream, how much more tile's been draining into it?
It hasn't, yeah, exactly.
Is we're over capacity.
Nobody's taking tile out, they're putting it in, so.
So, we need to approve this work order, and then that would trigger this meeting, landowner meeting?
Yeah, I'd say so, yeah. Motion to approve the work order for DD1 main.
I will second that. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So, yeah, we'll get a.
We'll have Val reach out and get a postcard. Hopefully, within the next week or two, and plan on a meeting right close to the end of July.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thinking maybe the 28th?
Sure, because they have, she gets it out. Even at the end of this week, or first part of next week, that's still plenty of time, that's still good. If she gets it out next week, that's still two full weeks, so.
Shoot for 10.
10 o'clock, 28.
Okay, now we'll go back up to DD21, the quote, quote from Nathaniel Julesse on taking care of our property out there. With the Reed Canary Control.
Sounds like he's been dealing with Army Corps or whoever's been hounding us about that.
Yep, and he's got a bid in $14,600 for that 3.8 acres.
I see.
Mow it, disc it and spray it, and then he's gonna mow it and seed it, and I would imagine that $14,600 includes the chemical spray and the seed.
I would assume so.
It didn't spell that out in there, but I'm sure that's what it does, so.
Yeah, I'd motion to approve the DD21 west quote from Nathaniel Julesse.
And I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And the next thing we can't do, because it never got back to us.
Oh, the railroad?
That, Jackie, I got it coming down. Yes, the railroad never got back in touch with us. So hopefully, they'll have that by the, uh, 14th, 14th back, yes, yes.
Just throw your name on there, so it's official-ish. Thank you.
The next thing that she's got down is review and possible reclassification annexation of DD1, 74, 40, and 28. We probably should, we definitely need to do it, but should we hold off on that until after we have the landowner meeting?
True, because, yeah, we looked at the map, and they're all just kind of co-mingled, and they probably just need it all to be done at the same time.
He said he's never been assessed anything.
Yeah.
So, let's just hang tight on that one.
And two of them are right there. Um, yeah, that's what I wish to have that meeting, and then we can have that discussion with.
We definitely need to do an annexation reclass on DD1 and DD74, because DD74 dumps into the DD1 ditch. The other ones lay up north of it and to the south, and they go on their own down to the Shell Rock.
But 40 is not in good shape at all, and I know it's not a good time for assessments, but.
That was the only thing I was thinking of.
That's been sitting there for a long time that way, and I, I don't know what to, I don't know what to tell.
Needs to be brought, it needs to be.
DD1 needs to definitely be redone, especially if there's. Sitting there's a bunch of.
It should have been done at the last project.
They're in a ditch, they're in a drainage district, and they haven't been assessed or anything, and they're not even part of that.
Now they got a ditch that ain't working.
Now they got a ditch that ain't working, so.
Yeah, it hasn't met an issue for the last two years, but it's just gonna continue to get worse, so. Yeah, let's just, we can do that after our landowners' meetings, I think. I mean, gives us time to think about which firm we want to use.
Yep, that would be, make that decision at that time.
Yep.
Any claims? No. We did them last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any claims? Payroll? All motion to approve payroll claims.
I have a motion to approve the payroll claims, I will second that. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. You want both these signed?
Uh, yes, please.
Liquor, cigarettes, anything else?
Oh, payrolls first.
We have payroll on Sydney Kingery. Did I pronounce that right?
You did.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve the payroll for Sydney Kingery? For the insurance department?
Uh, yeah, I'm motion to approve the payroll, really.
I second that. I have a motion to second, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Jesse, how's the deputy service going?
Real good, actually, uh, yeah. I have one coming down for NFTI, and I think, uh, probably.
Anything else you got there?
I got a cigarette license, which you don't have to sign, it's for the Diamond Joe Casino.
Is there a motion to approve a cigarette license for the Diamond Joe Casino?
All motion.
I'll second that motion, I have a motion to second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we've got FY26, Iowa Communities Assurance Pool renewal. And the only option there is cyber option?
Plus, you can go up, there's a chart where you can go up in, in coverage to, for, um, excess liability from 12 million up to 15 million, if you want to do that. There's different levels. I don't know. There's a dollar amount for those.
That cyber thing, I know we had talked about that with the guys when they did that audit on us, whether it's worth it or not.
Yeah, I don't, I asked. Yeah, it's kind of like all over the place, I asked, um, because Shannon had a question, because, uh, one of the grants she was going for, they required like a million on cyber insurance, and I asked, and, uh, one of the county, which, Potawatomi, I think, so that, that, one of their IT guys responded to me and said their publics, uh, public safety office or something like that. Publics, uh, public safety office or something like that had said they're looking at about that amount of coverage, but I mean, that's Potawatomi County, they're a much bigger county.
Yeah, that's the thing is.
So.
The option is two hundred and fifty thousand, we have now going to a million and the difference in price is eighteen hundred and fifty one dollars for the two hundred and fifty thousand. Going to fifty nine seventy one or almost six thousand. On a million. I would have to say two to six, yes.
Well, and.
Not, yes.
Did they say anything about extra, like sometimes when you bump up, you know, that much coverage, they require extra stuff on our end, like. We were already doing two factor off, but they might require. You know, more audits and stuff like that, did they say anything about that?
I seen, all I seen was the deductible is ten thousand on that.
Oh.
It's a big deductible.
Yeah, it is.
And that didn't change even when you, when you jumped, as far as I could tell on there.
Well, that's, I remember we talked about that with that audit, it was a. Pretty expensive for what it is, especially with the big deductible, but we've got our backups amongst backups, I mean, I think we're.
I think we do pretty good.
Right, we're not, we're not a county that's just getting into this where we got a big risk, big liability.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we're ahead of a lot of others and to me, I guess, I don't. Don't that I worry about it right now. Unless, unless you're hearing or you're saying something different, I don't.
I mean, that would be my, you know, advice too, I don't think for the, the extra. You know, the extra cost, I'm not.
Right.
If I knew more, if I knew more counties had like gone through it and had to pay it, you know, and how. How willing are they gonna be to pay, you know, when you're asking them for the money, that's the other thing.
And then too, what, what other extra stuff on top could come up with that?
Yeah.
As far as.
So, did Shannon mention to you the possibility of not getting grants because we didn't have enough cyber?
She didn't, I don't know. I, I don't wanna answer for her, cause I don't know.
I didn't know if she mentioned that to you.
She didn't mention that to me.
Hey, sorry, I'm actually on right now and I wanted to, I just emailed you Colin, cause I heard you talking about it. I was able to get the grant this year, but they said they would reevaluate the coverage for next year, but I talked to Terre Godot County and they don't even have that much coverage. And they said they're not going to get that much coverage because like what you said, Colin, they'll require other things further than two factor authentication. And it won't, the grant I wrote for was for ten thousand dollars, it's not even gonna be worth the cost of the cyber, so, um. I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even worry about it because if next year they tell me I can't have it unless I increase it, then we'll have, we'll just do without because the cost of getting it doesn't. Make sense to do for a grant that size.
I agree.
Thank for your. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, sorry to jump on, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, we want you to, I'm glad you're on there. You answered my question, are you interested in that, at those premiums at the bottom? I think we're good with what we're at.
Let's stay status quo, I'd say.
So is there a motion to approve? The Iowa Communities FY twenty six Assurance Pool Renewal?
All motion to approve.
I will second that motion. I have a motion as second, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So I just need two signatures there. And I'll check the boxes or whatever.
You definitely need this one.
Yeah.
And you need this one. Probably got them all juggle for you. Hold on, here's a paper clip that goes with this.
Keep the juggling in order.
Okay, next is a discussion on the transfer of funds from Iowa one oh five fund to the fifteen oh two capital fund. Does that look good?
Um, I was, I was just figuring, yeah, I think so. Um, since we already went through the hoops and we're gonna be using the money pretty quick anyway, I just thought we could. Go ahead with that and then we won't have to bond for as much. If you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, I'll just back when we do.
Because we, there's money there, cause there's money there now and I just gotta, I gotta. Figure out if we, how much of that six million we've already used to see what we need to. If we need to go out again. And, and we kinda do anyway to use the rest of the. The two point five million dollars from the first loan, so we're probably looking at an urban renewal. Amendment anyway, so I just gotta get my ducks in a row, but I thought we just, since we paid the money to, to get the internal loan, I figured we could just. Go through with it so that the money's there because I think Jason's gonna be spending it pretty quick. Yeah, okay, I'm gonna be spending it pretty quick.
No, that's fine.
Cause people give me bills.
I say, yeah, just stay as we're doing it right now, leave it alone.
Okay.
So motion.
And you already, you already agreed to it when we did the, when we did the resolution, so.
We've already decided to.
I just wanted to run it by you guys because we didn't end up technically negative at the end of the year, but. We're gonna be spending it right away anyway, so I just wanted you to be aware.
Jesse, did you find yourself a bailiff yet?
No, yeah.
Oh, yeah? I'm still working on that. What is your duties deputies?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Probably helping out.
Mitchell County thinks it's been working alright?
Take a couple of weeks ago, the. Kidney that had some health issues, they weren't taking them.
I thought they would up for a certain amount of time, wouldn't they?
Yeah, their public health basically said they weren't gonna take them. So, we housed him here until the judge saw him and then judge released him, so. It's really not an, a major thing.
Okay. Thanks.
We'll reconvene this. Uh, secondary roads facility and office building projects. Let's do review of final plans and the scheduling and construction cost estimates all at once.
All at once. So I handed out two excerpts, drawings. One being for the maintenance facility, the second for the office building, I'm just gonna start with walking through the plans, we'll start with the maintenance facility. Go to drawing two. The second sheet there, it's just a site line for the overall project, so my plan is to. Bid all of the site grading, sewer, water, um, all of the aggris surfacing as part of the secondary roads facility. And we'll put a box around the office building and basically the site paving around the office building will be part of the office project, but. I had to tie it to one of the projects, my understanding is secondary roads is first and budget depending, the office building second, so I put it all with the secondary roads building there.
Office was.
Yeah, okay.
Off, yep, office will most likely go.
Okay.
Plus, it's crazy, out of control bid, but it's.
Yeah, so. This is a secondary roads building, just north of the conservation, office out to the west of that. There is no drain tile, there's no storm sewer, there's no anything available in this area, so what we've done is two ponds for, for water. One in the northwest corner, one on the east side, trying to cheat most of this water to the east, to that long narrow pond. If that one overflows, it'll run east to the egg field. This one up here in the northwest corner, if that one fills up, it goes towards the road and towards the railroad tracks, so. Trying to get as much water out of here as possible, no tiles, so we're relying a hundred percent on infiltration. Water just soak into the ground, I've talked to the city, they said that's how everything in that part of town works, so they're okay with that approach. There is no city sewer water up here, we'll be extending the sewer, it's currently in the alley just south of the conservation. So we'll have to extend eight inch sanitary sewer up to serve both buildings. The plan will be, we'll put it in, the city will take over future operation and maintenance at least within city railways on that. Uh, water main, there's a water tower just in the south there, so we just have to extend the water main onto the property, nothing, nothing to do with that part. Uh, Matt with Rich, we did talk through site grading, how much of this rock we wanna put in as part of the bid, how much he may wanna do. Decision was made, let's get it built out as shown here as part of the project, so everything you see here as far as grading and. And gravel, which is the circle hatch in there around the buildings, all of that will be included as part of the project. Questions on site? Good, moving on to next page. Floor plan. So the majority of this is just a heated storage area. Um, southeast corner is wash bay. South side right in the middle is weed control, there'll be two bays there. Uh, southwest corner will be the Terradon Bay or workshop. And then on the west side there, we've got office, break room, lab, restroom, shower, locker room, et cetera. Um, that'll be two, two levels there, there'll be a mezzanine on top with some mechanical above that and some additional storage. This will be a pre-engineered metal building, this will be steel framed, twenty two thousand two hundred and seventy square feet. So moving forward, we've got, moving ahead, we've got a blow up, large office storage area, top left corner. See the office in the top left, break room below that. And then the, the larger room on the east side there is just a big storage area. There is a mezzanine above this, which is the bottom right corner in, in that drawing. Mechanical room will be in the northeast corner of the mezzanine and then storage for the rest of it, um, it's not labeled, but there'd been discussion about. Possible sign area, et cetera, so we just did separate that off in its own room.
If we were to eventually get a computer system to do our own signboard, we would want something that's a little cleaner than just ugly.
Moving ahead, we have some exterior elevations. Twenty foot eve height, uh, top one is the south elevation, so those two overhead doors you see there for weed control. Um, bottom view is the west elevation, the left overhead door is for the big storage maintenance facility. The right overhead door would be the Terradon Bay or the workshop. Um, next page, north side, no doors. Um, just some ventilation, and then the east elevation, the overhead door on the left would be to the wash bay. And then the one on the right there would be for the big, um, storage maintenance facility. Some more building sections, we show the mezzanine. Above the office storage area provide additional space. Getting a little too detailed, some questions, so that office area that will be. CMU is my block construction, so it's durable, same with the wash bay, um, the wash bay will go up to. Seventeen feet will be the top of the masonry and then from there up it'll be framed out by the studs. The last page in this excerpt is HVAC. We're doing radiant tube heat, we're not doing floor heat. Our last meeting with Rich and staff, we decided to have the FOB entry system. For the overhead doors as well as for, for some of the overhead doors, it's all, it's all the personnel doors. We got your information as far as your vendor you use, that is the last item that we've got to put in the plans or we'll sort of. The electrical engineer was on vacation last week, working on this, so we plan to add that to the plans here, first part of the weekend, have these out on the street.
Reason being is we have a FOB system, you get in an hour, not to worry about keys and it's easy to shut if somebody, you know, it's easy to shut off and have to rekey everything. And if the sheriff needs access to something off duty, if they need cones or something, there's access that we can give them to get into.
Wash bay.
Wash bay, yeah.
Yeah, cause you've also been talking about some sort of a FOB system for fuel as well, or something like that.
Yeah, that might be a completely different, have to be a completely different setup, but yeah.
Look at something similar to that.
And are you doing generators right off the bat too, or?
We're doing one generator on this site. That'll serve the secondary roads maintenance facility, the engineer conservation office, as well as the conservation building. So each building will have its own transfer switch. Conservation building will be a manual transfer switch and the other two will be automatic transfer switches. Sounds like a good idea. Question on this, that one, or we'll move on to the office? So the office building, second page, there's floor plan. Three thousand six hundred and forty square feet, it'll be a conventional woodframed structure. Not a lot has changed from our initial concept, other than refining some of the office spaces, common spaces. The talk so far is the left side there of the front entry would be engineering, the right side would be conservation, uh, whatever they pick, or this is up to them. So we have two offices on each side up front, looking at south side of the building. And then more workstations and storage going north, we have the storage area in the center of the building. It's not a, um, a tornado shelter per se, but it's built pretty heavy. We are putting in a fumarated door on that. We did accommodate some extra space in the northeast corner of that protective area for some of the IT needs. We also added different cooling and heating for this room itself because of the heat generated by some of that IT equipment. Uh, northeast corner of this office will be the training room. And then we've got a kitchenette, a couple of restrooms, some mechanical space, finish that off.
Do you have a door to the exterior for the training room?
No.
Wouldn't that make sense if there's a lot of people?
There's a hallway, there's a hallway. Parking's over here, so there's a hallway to go in.
Right there, okay.
Then they can just isolate out that north half of the building while I go through the entire?
Correct. And the next read is some elevations. Top left corner there is the south elevation, we are looking at metal panel siding, standing, metal standing seam rough. Um, and then a stone veneer on just the south side of the building for now. We went through, we looked at colors, I know Rich was pretty excited about that, we've talked. Colors, flooring, all kinds of the finer details. Um, as far as color levels have been pretty swatted at this time, the draw is the first round of the colorations, so we'll be refined after it's bid and. Questions on the plans? Moving to schedule?
So the only thing that basically, we'll do the office. And the groundwork at the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll split that.
Just split that, get that straightened out.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I did make, and just, I know two weeks ago you looked at the schedule. I changed that, updated that. With the addition of FOB, I pushed it back a little bit. So we're looking at bid lighting July twenty fifth. Secondary roads, eleven AM, and then the office building, one PM. Public hearing on plans and contract award for you July twenty-eight. I think we'll have really good interest on this project. I did, you know, typically what we look at a twelve month build on on these, I went a little longer. Um, I guess if you want me to move that back, I can, but I think it'll get better interest. Going to October, then that'll give you some time to push small flies to get some equipment put in there, et cetera.
I think that'll be fine as, yeah, if they get in by fall of next year.
Yeah.
Didn't work.
Now I was gonna do the same schedule for both. I mean, I could probably shorten one, but now.
If they get done sooner, they get done sooner. I mean, if somebody goes in there and knocks it out, right?
I guess, well, would you prioritize one over the other, like, you know, maybe you don't want to do that either.
Uh, it's tough. If it's not tied up, you could have two different contractors there, so.
Now, I believe both the same this way. They can work at it at their pace, but there, you know, there's a deadline.
Yeah.
Yep, I did a thousand dollars a day and look at the damages. So make sure we get this thing done on time. Okay, last item, estimate, where are we at? Probably whatever they want.
Rest of the stuff just kind of.
So we got the estimate for the office building, eight-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Maintenance building, four-point-one million, so we just bring it five million there. At least two, you add in five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand for conservation. We're at five-point-five-eight, we're getting, we're, we're gonna be close. I'm optimistic we're gonna see competitive bids as well. Now, the office building, bidding that's separate, I'm hoping to see some local interest. In addition to some of the larger generals that'll be pursuing the secondary roads building. Questions on that?
I don't think so.
No questions, we would, hopefully we could, the bids will come in, right?
Yep.
We're really close.
Look to approve our resolutions, setting the dates for the public hearing and bid letting. And I, I don't know, Rich or you, around that July twenty-fifth there, I just seen somebody from the county as a peasant for that.
What day is that?
Friday.
Yeah, it should be.
Now, I'll plan on being here to answer Mark wants to hear as well, then we'll have Jackie post it.
So the bids will be due to the auditor's office and then we typically bring them down here.
Yeah.
Until we've done the best.
We got a resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five there?
Something like that. We're doing the, yeah, office building first, yeah?
I'll motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five for the bidding, um, engineering and conservation office.
I'll second that motion. For the motion in a second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say it.
Resolution.
Roll call. Roll call vote. Stone?
Aye.
Lobrd?
Aye.
Motion carries. There's the spots. There's that one. Now, we got resolution twenty-twenty-five dash six. Two-six? Did I say, dash six?
Yeah.
Two-six.
I'll motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash two-six for the date hearing and letting on secondary roads maintenance facility.
And I'll second that motion. The motion is second, is there any further discussion on that? Roll call vote, stone?
Aye.
Lobrd?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Same thing.
Is there any other projects you're hearing around, Jason, that are decent size that are gonna be all for bid or?
Right now, I don't know. I mean, coming later summer, early fall.
Yeah. Schools or anything big like that happening?
That stuff's already, you know, school type of stuff, they typically start in May.
Right.
I think we'll see several bidders. Based on what I'm hearing, I'm hearing some of the subcontractor, electrical, I mean, type of contractors are looking for work. I'm gonna see competitive all the way around.
How do we have eight or nine bidders on the conservation remodel?
No, we didn't have that many, I don't remember for sure, but.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
I think we'll have more on that.
I think there's good sex, wasn't there?
We'll have more on this than we can on conservation.
Yeah, what's new is more attractive than remodel.
Yeah.
King One's already here, they're working on conservation there. Sorry for that. By the way, that sewer service did get fixed. I, I'd sent out an email at one time, but they did drill through it with the water line.
Oh, they did, they did.
Yeah, I found that they fixed it, so.
Okay.
No one's forgot.
Good deal.
Building and grounds, anything?
Um, Jake's building, treasurer's office, that. Common wall. On the side of it, which would be like the neighbor's side, there's plywood up there. And there's nothing protecting any of that, so it's, the plywood is like rotted out. Our roof's here, their roof's here, and there's a gap. So when rain hits any of that, it's running in the wall. And that's where we think we're getting our water that's creating the ceiling, what ceiling.
Still gotta fix it.
Tear that plywood off, put new plywood on and then rubber, put rubber roof on it, basically rubber membrane to seal it. So that when the water runs down that wall, it'll continue down to the lower roof of the neighbors and then head out.
Is that a shared cost then, or?
It sounds like that was a argument before.
I think so.
And of course, they want the county to pay for it just because you have deeper pockets, right? But, and, and it's not, not a ton, I'll get a price from them, but I think we need to get it done, cause it's just gonna.
Keep wrecking the.
If the neighbors don't have the money to do it, then.
There's no use fixing the inside.
We're not talking a ton. I mean, I, I would say, I don't know if it'd be five thousand bucks, but it just, I'll, I'll get, like, to get us a price and then. Get that figured out so it's leakable, so we can get the ceiling tiles replaced, so it looks better. So. And then the boiler, you saw the email in the boiler.
I saw the email on the boiler.
He's got that covered, so. That's it.
Okay, uh, Melissa, are you on?
Hi, um, I just have a meeting today with a guy that wants to open a business in Northwood, so we're gonna discuss revolving loan fund options. And then, uh, I'm on the radio on Thursday and then that's it.
What do you do on the radio?
Promote tourism and the events throughout the two counties.
Ah, that time of year, huh?
Yep.
Alright.
Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, next one is a little further discussion on the employee handbook that we approved last week. I got a email about it, I got a telephone call about it.
Why are we getting this now? Because it's been given out to everybody, there's been plenty of talk, plenty of discussion, there's been plenty of time to decide on it. Why after it's approved?
I'm not disagreeing with you.
It's just frustrating, cause we put a lot of time into it, especially Teresa.
Well, one of the things, one of the questions that I did get was from public health as to why the girls are having to fill out two time sheets. One for the way public health does it and the way they've always been doing it, and now the new one that you guys came up with.
Because everybody else in the county fills those out, everybody else.
It's not a new one?
No, well, it's new to them because they've always done it their way. But if we're gonna track their time, we'll have to figure out something.
And I agree with that, it just.
Every other, cause you guys double up too, don't you? Yeah.
We do the pay cycle and the payroll.
Mm-hmm, it's, it's nothing new, it's just they've never done it before. Everybody else fills that same time sheet out.
So you guys have people that fill out two time sheets too?
Well, we have our pay cycle, but because we work twenty-four hours a day, it doesn't, you know, we don't work Monday through Friday, so. Pay cycle's a little different than the payroll. Can be confusing to people, but after a few years. Well, and I don't want to see anybody double up on anything, we don't have to, because it's a lot of time. But it does say, and if I'm wrong, somebody can tell me, but that each person shall fill out an approved timesheet from their department head. So doesn't that mean was what the department head gives them? It's not necessarily, doesn't necessarily say there's a blanket general timesheet.
But we, the county has used the same one forever. We have one for everybody else in the county, just not public health.
Is there a major difference between them?
I, I'd have to talk to Teresa, I don't know.
The impression I got it was just the fact they had to fill out two of them.
We just, we need to know each person's leave, so we can start tracking it and Teresa just started talking with them about that and I, I don't think that has anything to do with the handbook, it just has to do with our procedures of what we're gonna do going forward, so that we can have checks and balances there.
Did, did you hear anything?
Um, the, the way I, you know, that's what the question was brought to me too, was fill out two time sheets and then the way I read it in the handbook, it's basically department head specific. So I don't know that.
But if you want to get paid, there's, there's a form that has been used forever.
Right. But then again, that's not in the handbook either, that we have a blanket uh, timesheet that everyone must fill out.
I didn't know people were gonna get this nitpicky. This is, this is just frustrating.
So, I mean, I, I don't know.
We just need to work together and figure it out.
Yeah, that's my attitude on it.
And that's.
We kinda got it through everybody's head that all the departments are not the same.
No, they're not, and we understand.
I was under the impression everybody's kinda, when it came to comp time and all of that, they were figuring that out on their own.
Well, that's.
But it's tracked through our payroll system.
Right. Yep.
For everybody else.
I caught this when I first read it, when we were supposed to vote on it, and I read through the thing. And I didn't like it, but I thought if everybody's fine with it, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
But then bring it up before, not now.
This is a different deal. It says here, under recording hours of work. It says that the time sheets are not submitted in accordance with this policy, employees will not be paid until the next scheduled pay date following the submission of the documentation requested above. You're gonna hold that check.
I hope we don't have to come to that.
It should never come to that.
Yeah.
But I'm not so sure we want that in writing. That caught my eye originally. I went, wow. You hold somebody's check and they don't get paid about once a month.
The thing that's frustrating is people don't always think they need to get them in on time.
And I agree with you totally.
And that, that takes, that pushes, um, the deadline for Teresa and that's not right either. It, it, they have the, they have the, um, calendar, they know when they're due and if, if, they, they need to get them to us.
I agree totally, I'm not so sure.
We're not asking for much, kinda like claims, those are a struggle too.
And they should get them to you. If the department head doesn't get the stuff in, it's time to change department heads.
Well, then the department, I can explain why their employees didn't get paid.
But it is pretty hardcore, to skip a page. That's the only thing I was thinking.
Hasn't been working for so many years and that we have to have this.
People are kinda slow in getting things into Teresa's way, I understood it for quite a few years, right? Would you agree with that?
It's frustrating.
Yep.
And the, the claims and the payroll calendar goes up to everybody.
Everybody.
For the entire year. It's not like it's a, you get it two weeks.
It's no surprise.
So I agree with that, if, if, there shouldn't be any any late anything, because everybody should have it on time. They know it's in their calendar for the entire year.
My only, my only question then is I know it says in there that the department head signs the payroll. There's days I'm not here when payroll goes in.
Right.
I'm not gonna drive all the way where you're gonna sign.
No, that, we'll work with you on that, I mean.
I think that's just being understanding between.
Well, I know, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't gonna cause a problem, because.
And I can understand why you're asking.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to.
Yeah. So, but that was the two things that, one of them I noticed, another person noticed that about holding the checks. And the other one was the fact of having to have, like the home health aides having to do two time cards. And fill out two time cards. I did not realize that.
Well, and administration can do that too, because I know, like, isn't it different with your department that they punch the time clock?
Punch time clock and then they still fill out a paper form that indicates what categories they were working in, what time off they want. So we have two different forms that they, well, one basically, I mean, one is the actual punch clock. And then the other one is just, here's what we did for the day and here's how many hours we put towards that category in that day.
And then do they basically fill those out, or does?
They fill them out, they fill out, they, they punch it, they handwrite what they put in their paper time sheet. And then Kimberly goes through everything to make sure the punch time and everything else adds up to eight hours in a day or forty hours in a week, and then there's always discrepancies, it seems like every time there's an error in, in the math, but we try to get all that stuff taken care of throughout the, after, after it's submitted and then then I go and I spot check and then initial it. When I'm here, right when the time gets turned in and I forget to initial it.
So it can be, I mean, it is a detailed process. And there are people that check it along the way.
Communication. That's the biggest deal, let's communicate and try to straighten some of this stuff out. Let me see if there's another thing here. I hit the two high points. So that was why I added it to that. So. Um, now department head discussion, anybody?
I have a question regarding that AC, the mini splits. I know they were working on the, um, compressors outside and stuff. Are they gonna come back and clean the units itself on the inside?
They didn't come inside?
I thought they were going to.
They probably didn't know there was another one.
Oh, no, they, no, they came in and I showed them how black it is on the inside of the unit.
Oh, that's, um, yeah, if it's clean in the outside, there's still filter and stuff on the inside that needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, I mean, the inside of the unit, and you can pop in, it's, it's black in there.
I will find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Uh, supervisor comments? I don't have any. Do you have anything? In that case, then is there anything we need to add to the agenda?
Just put that bid letting on there, twenty-fifth, in case either one of these guys wants to show up too. Then it's not, then it's done. If you wanna show up, you can, if you don't, you don't have to.
Gotcha.
But Rich will be here.
Hopefully, I have to stick up my calendar, but.
Yeah, I'll be here, I'll plan on being here.
Um.
This is my birthday, Jason's mine, right?
In that case, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn. I will motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.